Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Casco Township Planning Commission meeting of May 16th. We will call the meeting to order and we will have our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Jim, can you give us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, to which it stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, we'd just like to have a brief moment of silence. I read today, and I know you've been watching this obviously also. We've had 200 mass shootings in the United States this year. So let's take a moment of silence for all those families that have been involved with Thank you, folks. I appreciate that. Our next order of business is the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions and/or directions from our meeting of April 18th? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. April 18, 2023 minutes.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Gina, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Karen. The approval of the agenda is our next item up for this evening. Any additions and/or directions to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for May 16, 2023.
Thank you, Gina. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
John? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Karen. Anything that you'd like to move with you down the way here a little bit? Any other communications? Okay. Discussion from the floor. And this is for the residents of Casco Township that would like to discuss with the planning commission items that may be on your mind. So if you so desire, please step up to the podium. We ask you to please hold your repertoire down to three minutes if you could. Okay, saying none, we will move on. Public hearings, we do not have any this evening. Unfinished business. This is concerning the adjustment to Article 2, Section 3 definitions in Article 14, Section 65, one of our favorites by the way. Accessory buildings of the zoning ordinance to include regulations of hoop buildings. Steve, could you lead us into that a bit?
So this item is back on our agenda because at the last meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of the amendment with modification of the language for item D. The modification was hoop buildings 300 square feet and under shall not require building permit. The building apartment saw that and they, the building inspector said that that conflicts with his duties as a building inspector to enforce the Michigan Building Code, which requires any building over 200 square feet to have a permit. So he's sending it back to the commission requesting to review the original language of hoop buildings 200 square feet and under shall not require a building permit.
And I believe his recommendation at the last meeting was 400 square feet. Is that correct? Sure. Okay. A little bit of a dilemma. We have an ordinance that we wanted to change and we approved it at the last meeting, however you are. We're into a bit of a conflict with the building department. And the building code, the way I understand it, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong with what you know, or Karen, it's 200 in the state initially.
Can we copy that?
No. I don't. Do we have a copy of that building permit? Building code. Or the building code?
It should be maybe the third sheet in the materials that I laid on the desk this morning. You've got the yellow highlight on it?
Yeah, Brenda, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we go to Section R of 105, permits. And does not exceed, one-story detached structures of a florio does not exceed 200 square feet, building permits are not required. So we have an interesting opportunity. You know, we are a recommending body and we recommend what we believe to be correct and just to our folks at the township board. And they make the final decision as to what goes in the township or not. So with that being said, what other discussion can we put out on the floor to have a look at this?
Applying for a permit then also initiates a process of a full site plan review, correct?
It could.
For accessory structure. I mean, what is that? So if it was to be approved the way it is now, then what does that process look like to get a permit for a 250-square-foot hoop building?
They'd have to put a foundation under it. That's where the problem lies. It's putting a foundation under a hoop building that's 12 by 20, 200.
Well, I don't know that it necessarily requires a foundation if we still leave in here that it says built in, built in accordance to manufacturer recommendation and meets all applicable Michigan Building Code. I don't know that the code specifically states that you have to have a footing under it. My whole thing is regardless of what the construction aspect is, how do you even get to that, to building it? Do you gotta go through a full site plan approval and come in front of a planning commission for a 250-square-foot hoop building? I mean...
No, typically, and we're gonna let Brenda come up to the podium here in one second, we do require to have a zoning permit. And I think Steve will back me up on this so that we know that these setbacks, setbacks have been made. But that's where it gets into a bit of a muddy water. So Brenda, can you clear this up a little bit more from your end?
Well, from what John just explained, the only requirement that would bring an applicant before the planning commission, please go with me if I may, is if it's a commercial establishment. If it's residential and it's 200 feet or larger, it would only require zoning and there's a $35 charge. Our zoning administrator goes out to make sure that the area staked out is within the requirements of setbacks. There's no full building permit required unless it is over, if it's 200 square feet or over. And then it would be the zoning. They'd have to submit manufacturer's drawings or a handwritten sketch for a building official to approve and stamp. He would determine how many inspections would be required and the type of building that is being constructed, whether or not a footing, rat wall, or anything of that nature would be required. And the inspections for any residential building of that nature would be $50 per inspection. And there would be a $250 bond only if there's a building permit required. And that $250 bond is returned once the final building inspection has been done and approved. The bond returned and the CBO issued.
But last meeting Roland said anything over 200 feet, he was gonna require you to put a foundation in.
Well, and that would be his discretion. I don't know if it's across the board or not. I mean, that would be a question that would be directed to him and perhaps Steve would have some input, but...
But we were talking about the hoop buildings. We went through the whole thing during the public hearing. That's what he said.
So if that is what he said, then I would take him at his word. But I can't speak for you from my memory.
That's why they pay Roland those big dollars.
Do we have any other, anybody else, any other townships to know? See what anybody else has ever known?
Well, yeah, they follow the building code. We have to too. We really have a choice. We can't pass an ordinance that's in conflict with the Michigan Building Code.
But the building code doesn't, there's no section in the, in the building code that I'm aware of that specifically addresses hoop buildings and how they're constructed. Is that correct?
That's an interpretation of the building inspector. Zoning doesn't regulate that. We're looking here to, he's asking us to change that word to go back to 200.
And I don't have a problem with it being 200 if, if it's just a simple permit, pay the $50, get your building permit, and follow the manufacturer's recommendations or whatever is in the building code. But again, I don't think the building code specifically outlines or provides any direction on how to construct a hoop building.
That's a question for him. I don't enforce the building code.
That's where I would leave it at. I would be curious to find out what Roland's interpretation of the building code is and how it impacts the construction of a hoop building if he's gonna have the final say on how it's done. Because like you said, Steve, it's, he's gotta follow the building code. And if the building code doesn't specifically provide a section as to how these things are, be constructed, then by default, you go back to manufacturer recommendations, right? It's not up to the inspector to say, well, there's nothing in the code, so this is what I want in my township?
Hopefully, they're gonna do that. Yeah. Okay. It's a little bit of a sticky wicket, as we all know. But again, we are a recommending body. We have already passed this with the 400 square feet, which is what we will pass on to the township board. And the township board will make that final decision. Now, there's a couple of things that I might suggest that we do or could do before we try that mechanism. I would almost like to see a manufacturer of a hoop building, one of the ones that maybe Roland would suggest, and come and talk to us about the hoop building, about some of the things that you're talking about, John, and with Roland here.
With Roland here.
You know, and just walk it through. What I'd like to try and do is give as much information as we can to the township board.
What is the township board, can they approve? What if they just approve 200 feet and then move on?
That would be up to them.
Oh, that's how it would go?
Yeah. All right. I mean, that is, that's, we're a recommending body. And Steve, as we chatted a little bit before about that, we can't really, we can't change that. This is part of the building code. So it is something that we would eventually, obviously, have to pass it on to the, to the township board. But I feel a little, you know, this is something I really don't wanna do, to be honest with you, until we've had a chance to research it more. And I think to your point, you know, Sue, maybe we have a couple of folks, or have Roland, talked to a couple of the building inspectors in the area. I've asked him to call the state building department, John, and get some other feedback from them. You know, we're not the only ones in this position who know about it. We're taking it to a little bit farther degree because of what we've entered ourselves into. And I gotta tell you, folks, part of that is my fault. I didn't even think about the 200 square feet on the building permit side. So anyway, all that being said, we're here now. That's what I think we should do.
I like that, understand why Roland would think it needs a foundation.
A lot of it is the wind loads, you know, and what may or may not happen in an area.
Yeah, but that's not gonna stop your fabric and all the stuff blowing off.
No.
It's not doing anything.
Well, I guess, what's Roland's definition of a foundation? I mean, could you, could you anchor it to some concrete bin lock and call it a foundation? I mean, is he wanting, what's a 42-inch rat wall poured in the ground? Or? I think that's...
Yeah. And some of it, so much of what we're talking about, John, is liability, you know, and that's part of the big issue here.
Oh, we have to be careful. There's a fine line between liability and overstepping. I mean, if the Michigan Building Code doesn't say that, we can't make, just make up rules 'cause we're afraid of a potential liability, right?
It's true. And I think we have to be fair. But I don't know if we totally understand all of the parameters here. So...
I mean, I think the first, first and foremost, I think we need to understand what does the Michigan Building Code say about this particular structure? If it doesn't say anything at all, then I think we have a little bit more flexibility to make a decision based on what the township wants.
And I think Brenda, can, Brenda, you can maybe help us with this a little bit as we, you know, we work through this with Roland?
Certainly.
And some of our contacts at the Michigan Building Department?
Yes. There is a large hoop building on Meisner Road, large. And Roland spoke directly with that manufacturer. But I think the size that John's referring to is apples to oranges.
Yeah. Fantastic. The manufacturer recommended when that structure was constructed, and then they followed the rules and they did it right. But I would say that that's, that manufacturer had that requirement because of its size, whereas most hoop structures, the manufacturer is not going to have a requirement to have a footing similar to that one that you're referencing in particular.
Right. So that's my thought. Obviously, that's your decision, what you wanna do. If you wanna table this and allow us to get some more information, I think it'd like to be worthwhile for us to do that.
I think it's important to state once again, because this is the first time that I guess it was made clear to me, if it is not a commercial applicant, a plan review is not required for the building permit process for this. Is that correct?
Under 200 feet. Okay.
Regardless.
And just Michigan?
If a residential...
Since this junction for residential does not require a site plan approval. Oh, no, not site plan.
That's what I'm saying. So if I'm a resident in this, in the township and I'm on residential zoned land and I wanna put up a 500-square-foot hoop building, I don't need a site plan review, I don't have to come in front of a planning commission, I gotta do my zoning and my building permit. Which I think, whatever, it's reasonable, it is what it is. I don't think it's, I don't think it's too unreasonable, as long as the requirements of construction, as long as unreasonable requirements to the construction aren't going to be imposed within that building permit. That's the way I, the way I feel.
And that's why I thought if we had the manufacturer come out along with Roland, we're all gonna get a little more education. I don't like...
I know when, when I constructed one of these and we looked into a lot of this, it was, it's one of these finger pointing matches, you know, the, the building code says, refer to the manufacturer, manufacturer says, refer to the building code in your local area. In the end, it's Miller.
Well, and we unanimously approved at our last, at our last meeting, John.
Right, right.
So we're, we're, all I'm saying, wavelength, I'm just not so sure we understand what we're dealing with in the total process. Okay? So if I could have a motion somewhere to, to delay this for a bit until we get some more information?
I'll make a motion to table the topic of hoop structures, accessory buildings, and the definition and the requirements in which the township has to construct one to a later date.
Thank you, John. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right. Jim? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Karen? Thank you. New business. Well, let's talk some more about accessory buildings, Steve. And Karen, and we'll go on from there.
So based on some of the concerns that were brought up at the last meeting, seems that there may be an issue of people or applicants trying to pull a permit for an accessory building on properties, primarily residential properties where no one's actually living on the property. The property, there's a house there, but it's vacant, no one's living there, but someone wants to pull a permit for a hoop barn. So we have some paperwork. In Casco, accessory uses or structures, structures are allowed in every district so long as they are incidental to the permitted uses of the district. And below, there's a list of permitted uses in each district. There are big concerns in township regarding one's ability to build an accessory structure without having an active principal use. This includes properties where a home is not occupied. We suggest strengthening the township's intention by including additional language to Section 65 under item J, which states, unless otherwise provided in this ordinance, an accessory use is subject to all regulations applicable to the principal structure on site and the following. Item A, accessory uses and structures shall be clearly subordinate in area extent and purpose to, in modified language, establish an active principal use or structure. So we're adding a little bit more language to convey that we want the property to have an active use on there. So if someone's saying, oh, I'm pulling, I'd like to pull a permit to have an accessory building on my residential property, the ordinance says that property has to be active, so someone has to actually be living there.
Is this only in the residential zones with the township?
This would be the issue or just the...
No, the, the ordinance as it would be...
This applies to, this would be in the general accessory buildings ordinance. So it would apply to any district.
'Cause I know there's a lot of conversation about, okay, so if I own 10 acres and I live here, but I also own 20 acres of this, this parcel does not have a hoop on it, that this ordinance prohibits me from building an accessory structure on that land for farm use, storing my tractor over there, so I don't have to drive it back or that kind of thing, right?
Farm use is separate though. That's because it's old.
Farming is exempt.
And farming, you can just build the barn and, not just, so, not that easy, but I'm saying...
You have to have an address. Generally, you would have to have an address.
But if you're paying taxes on that piece of property, wouldn't it have an address?
No, a parcel ID, but it won't have an address.
So a farmer can't put an accessory building on a vacant piece?
If they're gonna put electricity in the barn, they would have to have electric, DTE would have required them to put in, have an address. And we have, it's very rare. But what we're talking about here is not what John's referencing.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is property that has a vacant home on it.
Or no home at all.
No home at all, or vacant, right? But vacant has been the issue that we've been confronted with. And they live in Chesterfield Township. They buy the home with no intention of living there, but wanna construct an accessory building. And it hasn't become prevalent until the last couple of years they're popping up. And, you know, it's, it's created some, some issues. So, you know, we were just hoping to have that language narrowed down, especially when they, we know that they live in another area and they don't intend on residing here.
Is it mainly due to the creation of a business at that piece?
Well, that's kind of what...
Because it seems like it's kind of different. I live in Chesterfield, I bought this farmhouse here, it's old and it's, and I'm slowly, 'cause I can't afford to do it all at once, living here fixing this up compared to, which is, I, people do that. They can't afford to go all in and afford acres of a farmhouse.
Right.
Compared to the guy who says, I'm never going to do that, but I'm gonna run a business. And the business is the problem.
Right.
Which they're doing, you can see. That's what they're...
Right. The instances that we've come across, they're not residing there to fix it up, they've got no activity going on. It's just they buy the vacant home, the property, and then they come in for an application for the hoop building. And right now, if I understand your ordinance correctly, it just, it's accessory to the principal residence. So there is a principal residence, but there's nobody living in it.
You definitely change it to occupied principal residence, though.
Yeah, plus the word actively. I show up once in a while.
You know, there's people that use those cottages even though they don't, not living in Roseville.
Would active, occupied be a better verbiage versus active or, I mean, that would be the planer's call.
Hi, I'm township supervisor. Yeah, I would like to see if there's language to show that it's proof of actively being used. If it's somebody's principal permitted use, whether it's the owner of the home or it's being rented out, that someone's actually living there. So, thanks, John.
And if it is a rented property, which we have come across that, we request and require that the property owner is the applicant, that the renter does not come in to construct an accessory building on property that they do not own. So when we are aware of that situation, the property owner must be the applicant.
Good point, Brenda. Further discussion? Well, should we have Karen look at this a little further and put some verbiage in there, truthfully, with some, frankly, some teeth in it? So that we know who, what we're dealing with. That's the important.
Do we want language that further emphasizes this is particular to residential properties and not just any accessory building for any type of business or use? Or is that the main concern?
Well, a business, they would need to approach your body. And we've come across that we have two instances right now where they are operating illegal businesses. They have not yet approached your body yet. They live in the homes, but they're running illegal businesses.
Right.
But is that non-residential zoning though?
I'm not quite sure.
Residential, yeah. Right? Yeah. An accessory structure in a non-residential district would come back and require a site plan approval, so. So, but we might be able to just deal with ag and residential.
That's what I'm wondering, John. Does that answer your question a little bit, if we narrow that down to the ag and residential? Gina, does that sound reasonable? So Karen, is that something we could do, just maybe just narrow that down to residential and ag?
Yeah, 'cause I guess, like, you know, I guess my issue is, in the ag district, there's more, there's multiple permitted uses. So someone could be, could say, oh, you know, I'm, this is going to be my farm. This is what it is. I'm farming agricultural activities, sale of agricultural products, conservation areas, a place to worship, a family daycare, or stuff like that. Those are also permitted uses in that district. So I'm trying to narrow down what the concern is. Is it just a specific concern you want to be addressed mostly for these residential properties where no one's obviously living there? Is that the concern?
That's what we've come across.
That's what we've come across. And you know, Karen, we're probably never gonna get an ordinance that's gonna meet them all.
Right. I didn't know how broad...
Yeah. But I guess my question would still be, and Steve and Karen, the ag and residential, is that what we're saying here?
Do ag or one or two?
Okay. Does that sound reasonable?
So if the property is zone agriculture, but they're not actually farming it, then the rule applies. But if they are farming it, then the rule no longer applies, correct?
Correct.
Go with that.
Okay. So why don't we, whoops, let's have a motion, please.
So would we say that, make a motion to amend the new verbiage to more specifically outline R1, R2, and ag to limit accessory buildings only when there is a occupied primary residence?
Yeah, have to strengthen the whole thing.
We'll go from there?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, makes sense. Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Brenda?
Steve has been very helpful in any questions that Roland and I may have when these things come up, because we don't wanna make any missteps. And he will directly talk to the applicant, the potential applicant, or let us know what specifically we need to do.
There was a big concern there for a while, that people buying, and they were across the region buying these homes for their property, putting up a hoop barn and growing marijuana. It has subsided substantially, but that's what kind of caused a lot of hoop barn. Okay, there's a motion, ten seconds on the floor. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Basically, what we're doing is having Karen and Steve look at this and give us language that's going to protect us further and go from there. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, Carrie. Thank you. All righty, planners report.
Yeah, I do have something. I attended the Michigan Township Association Conference a few weeks back.
Good.
The beneficial session was where the attorneys for the MTA talked about what was happening in our legislature, some of the rules and laws that are going to affect local communities. I think there's three, two of which I'm sure we've talked about before, are short-term rentals. Again, the state is looking at passing legislation to preempt local jurisdiction over short-term rentals. So basically, allowing, without our approval, you know, they would handle it. And the other that is really gaining footage right now are mining, sand and gravel mining. It's considered a protected resource according to the state. And what's happening is there are so many communities across the area. Clay Township, one of my communities, which is trying to regulate it, that's causing some conflict. And so the state's looking to take regulation of mining and sand, gravel mining away from the local jurisdiction to allow them handle jurisdiction. Because if, in their mind, I don't necessarily agree with it, but in their mind, if it's left to the local communities, they regulate a lot of existence. So that's that. And the one that's probably good, if we see it happening, there is also legislation that's being proposed that would allow us no longer to publish in newspapers. Because of the fact that newspapers are antiquated, they gave an example that there are some communities in Upper Peninsula that are 200 miles away from an active newspaper. And it makes no sense to publish in that local newspaper. So they're looking at some kind of hybrid of allowing us to publish on our website. But those who don't have computer access or that could come in and register to be mailed copies of agendas on certain topics. Hasn't been flushed out yet, but they're looking to get away from the newspapers and move on to web-based printing, emails, and everything like that. So that were the three topics that were discussed mostly.
You make me feel old, Steve. Okay, thank you. Report from committees. Julie's not with us, so I assume we move on from there.
Sherman?
Yeah.
I would like, I discussed this with you earlier. I'd like to start making more concrete plans. Steve, I'll get with you to see what dates you're available. I'd like to have another combined planning commission, zone board of appeals training session. I know it's summer, and I know sometimes your schedule's like herding cats, trying to get you guys here. I know you guys provided me with the dates you will be in town, but I'd like to get that. That's important, given people have gone through it. Reoccurring training is always a good thing. And also, Steve, did they bring up anything about solar, too? They're wanting to take that out of local control?
They didn't talk, they didn't talk about any new legislation on solar yet. But I did attend a session on solar energy where it was presented by both U of M and MSU that did a major study, seeing the benefits of solar. And pretty much negated the, what people thought were the harm of it. So I suspect that there is going to be some legislation coming up because, again, they're concerned that this is a valuable natural resources that a community have left on their own with. Care about it.
Now, about the sand and gravel, well, short-term rentals, I don't think that's going to be too big of a concern for Casco Township, but sand and gravel could be. Especially that northern mile strip there between St. Clair Highway and Division. There's a lot of sand and gravel in that area, so, I mean, potentially.
What's happening, and I can respond upon Clay Township. Next week's agenda, the sand mine called Aldenac Sand and Gravel, or Sand and Supply, is asking for restriction of regulations. When they were approved several years ago, their hours of operation were restricted. They have to stop operation at 6:00. And they were restricted from having any couple of bottomed gravel train trucks and that kind of stuff. And they're specifically not allowed to occupy the site on Saturdays even for routine maintenance. So they're asking for a waiver of those conditions. I think the township knows they should give it to them, but there's also going to be a group of angry people there that are going to oppose that.
Yeah. You know, schools used to be that way, that communities tried to regulate them. And that was, authority was taken away. 20 years ago, the McDonald Elementary there on Cowie Drive, all we did as a township is give them an address and approve water to be brought in from the township. That's it. All site planning, everything was handled by the state.
Manufactured homes, two little landmarks. It's pretty much out of our control. Adult, foster, care homes.
Yeah, interesting.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. To the development aggression, they're completely putting a sales lot for manufactured homes?
Yeah.
Is that what's going on?
That's a sales, that's not a living...
No, it's a sales, a sales lot.
That was actually, they had to go through the township, one township permitting process.
We're giving it to someplace else and then they moved to there? They were supposed to be someplace else, I thought, originally, like four years ago, before COVID, or maybe it was the same spot.
They started construction without permits.
I remember hearing about it.
And were stopped, yeah.
Before COVID.
And then they were taken...
But it was the same location? I remember hearing about it a long time ago. Seems like it's been taking them a long time. Now I know why.
Okay, let's move on, folks. We will go into session two, which is our master plan five-year update. And Karen, can you lead us on to that, please?
Yes, so we provided, I provided a request to the planning commission. We provided two little just fact sheet overviews on the master plan process. Questions you can be asking yourself throughout the process. Where are we now? Where do we want to go? How do we get there? Has there been major changes in the community? Are there instances where the planning commission has departed from the master plan? Do the reasons of these departures demonstrate a need for an overall revision of the master plan? Just some paperwork to go over as we're starting the master plan process. Help better wrap my round it.
Okay. The development, the master plan development questions to guide, that is very interesting. I guess that makes you think a little bit differently, right? And that's a good thing. So I encourage all of you to look at that. It certainly did me. You know, the difference between a vision of goal and objective and policy is not always easy to understand. And so we will, we will look to both of you to help us get through that and go from there. The, anything new that I'm gonna survey, Karen, right now?
No, I was actually, I was going to ask the supervisor. You know, we'd love to get the survey going so we can post as soon as you're happy to start the survey.
And what do I need to do on it?
You just have to say, we're okay to post the survey on the website. And start gathering public input.
You need email confirmation? I mean, I could give you...
Sure.
A little verbal.
Yeah.
You know, you guys are, go for it. But I'll also...
But it's the authorization, you know, most.
Yeah, go for it. I'll send them verbal. I mean, email.
Right, thank you. Are there comments from the public today? Nick, as far as master plan update, anything that you'd like to maybe chime in on a little bit here?
Master plan's good. Well out of my scope, so.
Well, we're all learning, believe me.
I've learned a lot about the master plan by sitting here for this, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the master plan that we'd like to bring up, discuss, look at? Questions on, at least so far? It's probably a little premature at this point, but believe me, in probably the next month, Steve, four or five, Karen, the next four or five months, it's going to get a little different on that, no doubt about it. That survey's going to tell a lot. If we get the, how long will it take, did you say on the survey, to get the information back?
It's pretty quick to get the information back. It's just keeping the survey open enough so we get, you know, a lot of community response to it, so we can kind of see what the overall community perspective is on it.
It has always helped with the community, some elected official or administrator at the township has posted Facebook, believe it or not, that Casco Township has a community survey, please respond. That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Is there paper copies available for people that don't have internet access?
I can, we can format paper copies and have them sent to the township. And they can leave them out of the...
Perch department on that.
Joe, if you're going to be doing the posting, like Karen just said, she can provide some paper copies, so maybe we put that in the post as well. Hey, if you, you know, if you need, if you need to fill it out on paper, there's paper copies available at the township offices. I know that was a concern of the resident out here last month, that not everybody may have access to the internet.
Do you know when it will be available on our website?
I, I'll make a paper version first, and once I get that done, I mean, we can post it Monday.
Okay.
Right after she gets the email from Joe?
Yeah.
I want to make sure that a paper version is available at the time of the posting, so if someone does want to come in right when they see that.
I plan for my email to be...
Which that would be counterproductive if they see it posted on Facebook. You know what'll happen, though?
That survey will look somewhat legit, yes?
It'll look better, it'll be a little more manageable.
I'm teasing. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, I think we're at the point where we can adjourn. Are there, is there a motion to adjourn? Jim has made a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Gina, a second to that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, Carrie, thank you, folks. Be safe.